Okay, thank you. We'll get going and bring the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, March 6th, Planning Board meeting. And our first matter is a public hearing, and this is for Tavo Development LLC. This is an application for a preliminary re-subdivision plot, lot-line amendment, tree-removal permit, wetlands permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval at 15 Heathco Drive. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
You know this job very well. We're just maybe too well. We're combining the two lots. There was a lot in the rear and a lot in the front, lot 5 and lot 26, and they're coming together so that we can put the amenities into the back and push the house over a little bit and keep it back there where it was towards that line. If we keep that line in between the two lots, we cannot push the house back without a variance, a major variance. With that line being taken away and the lots being combined, it takes one, two lots and turns it into one lot, which is what you really want to see most of the time. And it allows us to put the house where we have it without having any problem at all. And as you see, we have put the driveway along the old existing driveway there for cutting very little into any kind of steep slopes. We have been before the DEP. There is a note, and we'll get two copies of it.
You had it. It was in the material, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. They have seen it, and they're okay with what we're doing here. We essentially took everything out of the wetlands, every driveway that we could out of the wetlands, so that we could go forward and not have a problem. And that's the gist of the whole plan.
Okay.
Pretty much what we're doing, yeah.
Yep. Any changes that you want to highlight?
No.
Okay.
No big changes, nothing, nothing, no.
Okay.
If I may, Michael, did you clarify the number of trees?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, thank you.
Okay, great. Sabrina, did you have any comments or notes on this?
Staff have reviewed it. Prepared for you are the environmental documents as well as the resolution. Staff have reviewed the final plans and the resolution, but I think it really depends on whether or not there's anyone here to speak from the public. We can review the other things after if you-
Okay.
Procedurally, you might want to start by declaring yourself lead agency. The 30-day period has expired. I don't think you've gotten any response that-
We didn't do that?
No.
No.
Okay.
So you can declare yourself lead agency.
So that means, are we in a position to actually issue the approval this evening?
Yes.
Even though we haven't, we, okay.
That would be the first step, would be to declare yourself lead agency.
Okay. So, is there a motion to declare ourselves lead agency on this application?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bob, did you have any comments on this application?
The comments I had were inserted into the resolution as conditions of approval.
Terrific, thank you. And we have the environmental short form that's been prepared.
Correct.
So we've had-
You have draft parts two and draft negative declaration part three.
Yep. Were there any questions or comments on the draft environmental assessment form?
I had none.
No.
Okay.
So that would potentially be the next step, is to adopt the negative declaration.
Right, right. So is there a motion to adopt the neg-deck? That's been prepared for us by staff?
Guess not. So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And so we have that without change, I can sign that, I guess, right?
Great, perfect.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public on this application? Okay. Not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to move forward to approve the, is this one also amended? Do we have some changes?
Well, yes. Just before you go that far, I wanted to bring to your attention, tonight on the dais as emailed to you late this afternoon, is a revised copy of the resolution that you received last week. When I was putting together the environmental review documents, I identified some inconsistencies, cleaned up the resolution, as well as added a couple of additional conditions to make sure that the resolution represented the plans and the references in the plan represent, references in the resolution represent the plans. And so those are track changed in the document you have before you as new conditions and corrections throughout.
Were there any material changes at all in terms of-
There are not.
Okay.
I added numbers, for example, how much wetland disturbance, how many trees, that type of thing.
Okay. Any other changes, comments on the app, on the resolution that we had before us? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
Well, yes, I'm finished with it. So I so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Good enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next matter is an informal hearing, and this is for a new application. This is Lee, application for a site plan amendment, subdivision amendment for clearing and grading limit line at 29 Kisco Park Drive.
Need some help?
Probably in the back, your right hand somewhere.
Back right. Yep, okay.
How you doing, Mr.?
Doing okay. What's up? Good stuff. I'm ready. We're here. Good night, Lester. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know. Good night.
I'll try my best. I gave you everything, so I think we have everything we need.
Yes. I'm sorry. Crazy.
It's probably a way of expanding it.
I'm sorry?
Probably a way of, yeah.
You'll have to do a few more resolutions, articulate and all that.
My name is David Coffin. I'm the architect that is assisting the applicant and also the homeowners, Bing Wei and Shang. And the property in question is located at 29 Kisco Park Drive in Mount Kisco. And the reason for presenting this is that the property owners want to construct a deck. They plan on taking down an existing deck and building a slightly larger deck. So what we're looking at is trying to increase, or would like to increase, the coverage as well as the extending by six feet the wetlands line that was defined by some boulders. Now, I had prepared a narrative, and I'm assuming that everybody had a chance to read that. So, you know, I went through the process, you know, giving reasons for why I felt that, you know, it should be approved. And also Sabrina prepared a memorandum and essentially giving you, or outlining some of the property history, as well as zoning conformance, but basically for your consideration, increasing the total building coverage and then also increasing the development coverage. And there was a letter and a permit that was actually received from wetlands.
Yeah.
Okay? That's already provided.
As part of this action, that the environmental coordinator's permit will be rescinded and the authority will rest with you along with this application for the wetlands permit.
Oh.
Yeah, so-
It's being rescinded?
It's going to be rescinded, yes. The environmental coordinator has been out of the office, but it was determined that due to, when he reviewed the wetland, the initial wetlands permit application, he was looking at information that was not tied to the resolution. So today, when we do approvals and we have restrictions where the planning board retains authority over certain aspects of a permit, it's written on the plan as well as in the resolution. In this case, when this was approved back in 2006 or 2008, there wasn't a note put on the plan saying that the planning board retained wetlands jurisdiction, but it was in the resolution. And so when the permit came through the building department office for the wetlands, he was only looking at the plans. He did not have the resolution stating that the authority belonged to the planning board. So now that you're before the planning board for coverage and for an amendment of the clearing and grading limit line, it makes sense that this board also will issue that wetlands permit.
Okay, all right, fine. I guess one of the things that, you know, that we looked at, that I looked at, was and considered in terms of the coverages. The original coverage certainly was based upon the development that was presented by the developer. And it seemed as though, at least based upon some of the minutes of the meeting that I had read, that there was a lot of discussion in terms of reducing the development from three lots down to two lots. And there was a real concern, I think, by the neighborhood in terms of oversizing, I guess you might say, the residents. So as a result, a lot of the coverage restrictions were made at that time, which in fact are a lot less than what you would have for a similar lot, okay? But it's due to the fact that you have the wetlands, I understand that. So-
But it's also context, is it not, of the neighborhood? Wasn't that-
That's what I was saying, yes. A lot of it was with the context, as well as the wetlands.
Right. I just didn't follow your comment, your observation, that why we would expect to see something larger but not in the context of this neighborhood, which I think was the thrust of the conversation.
I was only talking in terms of coverage-
Okay, okay.
From that standpoint.
Yeah, okay.
That's all. And certainly, the addition of a deck is not that significant in terms of building a larger home, I guess you might say. When the current owners purchased the property, they were totally unaware of all these restrictions. They had no idea of the restrictions concerning the lot coverage. They were never told that. That was never conveyed to them. There was never any site plan that had any sort of defining clearing limits or wetland or anything like that. So I think this caught the current owners or present owners very-
Excuse me. Now, when you went through the minutes, did you find any mention as to why the boulders were put in place?
Yes.
And what was that?
That was to define the clearing or limits, yes. Yeah. And, but unfortunately, this was never conveyed to the current owners. They had no idea what it was for. In fact, they only found out why the boulders were there as a result of one of the neighbors who happened to walk by. And they started discussing that. So at that point, that's when she knew that, you know, there were some limitations. So, but at any rate, you know, in making the submission of the, of the deck addition to the building department, of course, one of the things that occurred was a location of the dry wells and the piping. That was determined so that we know that the deck is not going to interfere with that. So what we're looking at with the expansion or enlargement of the deck, the amount of area, certainly that clearing or wetlands line would have to be, or would like, they would like to have that increased.
Well, can someone help me? Were those boulders solely there for clearing and grading limit line, or is that to delineate the wetland buffer or the wetland line? I thought it was the wetland line that was more important. That's why the boulders were there.
Correct. The boulders are for the wetland line.
Okay.
But the area that this work is being proposed is within the wetland buffer, the 100-foot buffer.
Turn that back.
If you, I had included a wetland map attached, exactly. And so the, the area that they're looking for the change is the clearing and grading limit line, which, as approved by the planning board, it appeared that the, the stormwater infrastructure was outside of the clearing and grading limit line. The actual plan that was submitted locates those structures right on the clearing and grading limit line. So there appears to have been a shift when this was constructed. In addition, just to give you a note about the coverages, typically when this was approved and history is correct, it was a three-lot subdivision. It came down to a two-lot subdivision due to the environment, the wetlands that were in the area. The planning board approved the development of the site and then allowed the typical 10% and 15% for future sheds, decks, so on and so forth. It turns out that when this was constructed in 2008, the coverage calculation worksheet that came in, came in just under, so from a building coverage where there was 1,402 square feet allowed, it came in already built at 1,402 square feet. So they're looking for overages, and their application indicates they're willing to take away some to try and give that balance for what they want to do now, because apparently what's there now is not necessarily functional. But it's really a matter of how the board feels about moving that line and, you know, doing what they want to do.
So what we have before us, there are really four things. It's really the moving the boulders for the wetland area. That would go further into the wetland buffer.
See, that was my understanding, that was actually a clearing line also, as well as a wetland.
Well, I'm going to come to that. So it's clearing, grading, wetland buffer, as well as, is it development coverage as well as-
Building coverage.
Site, building coverage, okay.
Yeah, you have those four things.
So it's four things, okay.
One of the things that seemed to have occurred here is after the recent survey of the existing conditions, we found that the actual building itself was considerably larger than was actually on the originally approved coverage calculations. So that just added, it exacerbated the problem and the issue here, so.
What is the deck going to be constructed with? Is it an above-
Pressure-treated, and it is above, yes, on post.
What did we get in terms of counting that as impervious surface, Bob?
That's considered impervious, so it doesn't need any stormwater.
Okay. Have you put gravel underneath it, et cetera, because-
That is correct.
Okay.
So it doesn't need any additional stormwater.
Right. Okay.
Based on the code, but, I mean, you have the discretion to, planning board does, if they see fit.
And this wetland drains into the Croton Reservoir, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I think one of the things that happened here is that, you know, certainly when this home was developed, they realized that with the restriction that they had, that that deck that is now there just simply had to be cut back. So as a result, it became almost unusable. And when the current owners, property owners, purchased the house, their children were young at the time, so that was one of the reasons, I think, why they went and did some clearing beyond the boulders, again, not knowing about that situation. But now that they have lived in, in the home, you know, they find that they need a larger deck, really, so that they can also enjoy the property.
How big is the existing deck?
It's about 50 square feet, and it's not very large.
Looks like it's only about, what, three feet wide, four feet wide, most?
About four, four and a half feet wide. In fact, one of the questions was raised by, by the current owner at the time of purchase, why, you know, is a deck, can we expand it? Why is this deck so narrow? And they were told that it was because of the wetlands. You couldn't build into the wetlands. I think it was a little bit more than that. It was also, it had something to do with building coverage. So, you know, again, they had no idea of what, what they were getting into.
Sabrina?
Yes.
A couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Can you shed any light on how it came to be that a house was constructed entirely in the wetland buffer, especially because it does appear, I don't know the topography because I'm looking at a schematic map here, but, A, you know, do we know why this house was approved entirely in the wetland buffer? And B, with regard to doing more construction in the buffer and adding more development coverage, how, how did, how would that accord with the way other applications in this neighborhood have been treated? Would you know?
Well, I cannot respond to how this came about within the wetland buffer. I would assume, given that this came in as a three-lot subdivision initially, that part of the give and take was identifying the most feasible area to locate future homes, so on and so forth. So that was part of the process that the planning board at that time, in the early 2000s, went through to, to, you know, with the applicant to develop the property. Other properties within this neighborhood, you know, a lot of them, you don't retain jurisdiction, you know? A lot of them come in and they go before the environmental coordinator who requires mitigation. You know, there's always the community character factor that is examined in relation to things that people want to do with their buildings or their structures. So that's all taken and weighed and measured accordingly. You know, there's the practicality side of things, much of what you do up here, you know, is it usable, what will it be used for? You know, one of the things that is, that is desperately needed to restore that wetland buffer is mitigation, you know, which is why, another reason for this board to retain the jurisdiction over the wetland permit. And, you know, to date, we haven't received as part of the application very much information about the condition of the wetland buffer or what the applicant is willing to do to restore some of that wetland buffer while balancing a usable yard, so to speak, is kind of what the rule of measure you have all used, from what I've seen, in reviewing these applications. So there's still missing information that I think might help you make your decision as to, you know, if you're willing to move forward or not.
I'd like to try and reconstruct some things. I don't, I remember very vaguely the site, but the original subdivision of the property was laid out approximately when? 1930?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
So it was, it was deemed a buildable lot?
At one time.
Yeah.
Which put us in a pickle, most likely, so that the compromise might have been that we went from three lots to two lots. The, the dry side of this is, is the septic fields.
Okay.
And so that's kind of-
Takes up the rest of it.
Takes up the rest of it. So it's a, it's a bit of a, trying to make a, something nice out of a, you know, not-so-nice piece of property.
If I can add-
Usable, excuse me. And, you know, so that now we're in another area where even though the, the requests seem to be small and modest, they just go beyond what was said before unless, if we said the 110% for the building, is that what we said in that?
Yes.
That number is 1402 times 1.1?
No, it's 1402.
That is with 1.1.
That's, that's the 110, the 1402.
Yeah, so that's a problem, you know, that, that we went into, and it's, I don't quite know what to do, but one thing that strikes me is that the driveway is mainly in the wetland setback, and the driveway could be moved. And that would be some sort of mitigation for, you know, for wetland buffer incursions. But that still doesn't help us with the footprint of the, of the building.
And it's, I just looked, it's, you know, the property is pretty close to the Kisco River.
Yeah.
And which flows directly into the Croton, so it's, it's not a unimportant wetland.
Yeah, we, we don't really want to have it. But if we move the driveway back, and then we get the oil drippings and the other stuff.
What were the other, what were the things that the applicant was willing to trade?
Well, let me, may I clarify something? That particular printout there is not actually, it's in disagreement with the approved site plan. If you go to the approved site plan, which is Exhibit K, it actually defines what the 100-foot wetland setback is. And you'll see that the house is not within that 100-foot setback. Part of the deck is, and neither is the driveway. It's actually beyond the wetland.
This, this sketch that we have, though, has got 1 inches 40 feet, so it seems to be, seems to me that the house and the driveway, if the wetland delineation's accurate on this, on this sketch here, it's, it's well within 100 feet.
So, so one of the things that we ask for, particularly in dealing with wetland applications, is a survey of the wetlands, as to where they're located, where they fall on the property. We clearly know that there have been differences between what was approved by the planning board and what was actually built. And, you know, the, the original approval is different than what was built, than what is there today. And the mapping that we provide is mapping based off of general sources, state wetland mapping, local wetland mapping, but we never say that this is the definitive line. We, we require applicants to survey their wetland areas to, to establish that line as part of their application so that we can definitively show where the house is in relation to, or in the improvements.
Can I say something? I mean, from a practical standpoint, I mean, if you really want to know where the wetlands buffer is now, you might recommend that they redeline it and get it re-
Yep.
Yeah.
Located.
And then maybe-
That would let the board know for once and for all where that is, since we have discrepancies, it appears. Because that was done, how many years ago was the wetlands?
Where's the discrepancy?
Well, whether there's a discrepancy or not, normally, actually with an application, has to be a delineation, what, within, after a year?
Within a year of the application, yes.
So that would be technically a requirement for the wetland application.
Yes.
I mean, I've seen it go both ways, where sometimes it helps the applicant, and then sometimes it doesn't, so.
So what you're saying is that the applicant has to have the survey or go out there, which means that you also have to have a wetlands consultant define where the wetlands is?
Correct. You have the, you have a-
Again?
You have a wetlands-
Excuse me. You make it sound like it should, if you want, if you do it once, it should just stay that way. And that's not the way wetlands work. They migrate, they move. And it may only be five or 10 feet, but gee, with this particular property, five or 10 feet's a big deal. So we require, as the chairman just said, that it be redelineated after a year.
Within a year, I think, right, of an application?
A year, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Within a year.
And it's been eight, it had been 10 years.
Oh, yes.
Or actually 12, because I think a lot of this documentation was done in 2006.
Correct.
Well, again, what was the applicant proposing to, to do in terms of reduction of coverage or, Sabrina, you mentioned something that they were, they were trying to exchange or thinking about exchanging as mitigation offset?
They have a 49-square-foot deck now, so they're going to make it into 118. So it's not 118 that's being added, maybe.
Right.
It's only 7, you know, 69.
Right.
You know, from that survey, if you look at the updated, the JRL survey, I think what you'll see is where that dark line is, that actually is the, and then the dash line, that is where the wetland is.
The wetland buffer or the wetland?
Buffer, I'm sorry, the buffer.
Okay.
Yes.
How do they know that now?
The 100-foot buffer.
So they surveyed it?
Well, it's not marked that way. It's marked as the clearing and grading limit line and the proposed line.
There's a difference, for your information, there's a difference between a wetland buffer setback line and a clearing and grading limit line.
Yeah, he did.
You know, the clearing and grading limit line is a line that was de-restricted. The wetland buffer line is a line that could change depending on the wetland itself. It's measured from the wetland.
It just happens to be coincident.
Yes.
Right. And I would think if the surveyor, if the surveyor did locate the buffer, he would locate the wetlands still, well, he did not show it.
Yeah, and I don't think he really could if, without the-
Delineation.
Delineation.
By soil scientists, right.
Okay, so if this drawing is correct, this one here, which sort of is mimicked to a certain extent by the JRL one, but I don't think precisely from my eye, then the wetland buffer ends to the right of the building as you drive up the driveway to the house.
Yes.
Okay. And you've cleared beyond that. And you've cleared beyond that, and so there's no need to move the driveway if it's outside of the buffer.
Can you please speak up at the microphone?
Do you have to come to the front, ma'am?
Yeah, as you're coming up.
Otherwise, we don't get to, you know, hear your dulcet tones, so...
Just want to add on the driveway, it's actually not built as concrete, it's actually gravel, it's a paver. So it was taken into consideration that the tile was built as, this is a wetland, part of the wetland. So just something for you to know.
Well, thank you.
What kind of credit do you give that? Any credit for that, Bob, in your calculations and...
Not really, but I guess it was something that the planning board liked back then to go into some sort of mitigation, because it was within close proximity of the wetlands.
Yeah.
It would be something that would help for a few years, maybe.
Yes.
For the more recent ones.
Yep.
Perhaps a site walk would be in order.
When they put it in, it was payers years ago. But hopefully it wasn't paid.
And they are payers.
They are payers, yes.
They're concrete payers.
And this house is on a half-acre, but it's quarter-acre zoning? Correct.
Quarter.
They've got a little extra land.
Well, yeah, but...
Maybe not usable.
Right.
You have a slate patio out there also.
That's being removed.
So that's being removed.
Yes.
What's the square footage on that? What's the...
49 square feet.
I forget exactly what it was. It was in the calculation that I did...
Was it number five? I think it's, well, you show it 115. On the development cover, you show it slate patio, is it minus?
Let's see. Under where now?
It's under 8.5. Existing 115-square-foot slate patio, it'd be demolished?
Yes, yes. That's it.
115.
Yep.
Well, just to move this along, my thoughts would be that I don't have a tremendous problem with the expansion of the deck as applied, but I don't think I would go along with the expansion of the clearing and grading limit line and the change in the wetland, and changing the boulders. I think that was done for a good reason, and it's an important reason, it's close to this important wetland. But, you know, the applicant's trying to do some sort of mitigation here in terms of the patio and removal. Unfortunately, we all understand what happens with purchases and, you know, some disclosure and inadequate disclosure. I mean, you made the comment that, you know, they asked, what were the boulders for? How come the deck is so small? And they said, well, it's wetland. So it's not that they didn't know, they didn't know what they're up against or what they're involved in, but they did know that, or should have known or could have known, or the representatives could or should have known that there was something that should have been investigated. But that would be just my thoughts on it.
I know for the clearing, what they said that they did was, there was a lot of poison ivy there, so they simply removed the poison ivy. There was no shrubbery or anything of that nature. And they just allowed it to really be natural. They didn't even mow it.
Perhaps Steve can come up with a plan where we can put some wetland species in that area.
Yeah, that would be, I think, a good idea, I would endorse that.
We would want the applicant to propose to us a plan to improve the quality of the buffer, then Steve can review it and determine whether or not...
That might be appropriate mitigation to help the applicant here.
Yeah.
So if the applicant does more in one category, we can do more in another category, given the difficulty with this set of parcels that are out there in that part of our town.
Yeah, just a thought, so...
I understand also that at the time that the original delineation was done, that the adjacent property owner would not allow the wetlands consultant to go on the property.
On the other property?
On the other property. So it was difficult to really delineate that. So when that delineation occurred, or how it occurred, I have no idea.
Well, then, since you have concerns about that, then having another delineation done may work in your benefit. But on the, going past the boulders, I'm glad to hear that it's left in its natural state, and I'm, you know, I particularly, you know, don't like poison ivy myself, so I can understand why you'd want to, they would want to remove that. But certainly, we don't want to ever have that be mowed grass or something like that, because that's going to have fertilizer on it, it's going to have some other stuff that's put on it. And if that happens, then when it rains, it goes into the buffer and it eventually percolates into the wetland. And that's exactly what we're trying to avoid.
So if I may suggest that the applicant be directed to revise the plans according to staff memorandum, and then to undertake a wetland delineation and identify, offer up some mitigation as far as increasing the health of that wetland buffer. And then if it's the pleasure of the board, maybe schedule a site walk when the weather, when we, when our most upcoming snowstorm melts. And then, you know, we can review what they submit and potentially set a public hearing if the board is satisfied.
Well, but I want to go back to one point that the applicant is making, is that the wetland per se is off the property, and I can see where it was originally flagged, this looks like flagging for it. So that's on the adjacent property, and is the neighbor still recalcitrant about having someone check that? Because if that line has moved where the wetland is, you know, then the buffer should also move one way or the other, or be fundamentally close to where it is now. So I think you have to check that and see if access can be gained so that it can be flagged. It was flagged, so somehow somebody got on it at one time. Now, that's just part of it, where the buffer ends is a measurement, you know, from where the wetland ends, as you know.
Yep.
Okay. So...
Tom, did you ask something?
Uh, yeah. I wonder if...
Tom, I'm sorry, can you lean into your mic?
Is it on now?
Yes.
Yeah, now it's on.
It seems to me that, well, a couple of thoughts come to mind. First of all, if we are headed in a direction of saying, if you repair the whatever incursion, whatever damage may have occurred in the wetlands, and then be sure that we, that one reinstates, reaffirms those lines, not only the wetland buffer, but the grading clearing limit line and to their original location, with the exception that it needs to be remapped, but to affirm those lines, and then say, and if you do that, then we're going to allow you to go beyond the 110%. It's, to me, it's going to be a little bit of hyperbole, and I'm not accusing anybody of theft here, but it's just the one that comes to mind. It's like saying that if somebody comes in and takes something off the shelf and leaves the store, and then gets caught and comes back and is told, well, if you put this back, if you put that back on the shelf, you could take this instead. And to me, it's, really, to me, they are two completely separate issues. And I think the wetland issue needs to be figured out, and it needs to be restored, and it needs to be honored, especially with the concerns that I think the chairman and Dick have already raised with respect to the importance of it because of the water courses nearby. With regard to the house and the deck, the statement was made that in order for the applicant to be able to enjoy the property, and I think there was some conversation about making it more functional, the deck in particular, I guess, it seems to me that the extra 10% and 15% that were in the original approval, those have already been used up for the purposes of enjoying the property. And if it turns out that the consequence of that was not a bigger deck, but a bigger house, well, so be it. So I'm not entirely sure that we ought to, I myself would suggest that this is, there's no reason to grant this, I think there are reasons not to, which is to, again, begin to set up these expectations for people in the community to come in and say, well, gee, you know, they got it, they got it, they got it, we're going to come in and we have a right to get it too, get these extra, extra coverage, extra whatever it might be above what's been approved. So I don't, I don't think that we ought to be in a position of negotiating here. It seems to me that there's nothing to negotiate. The numbers are what the numbers are, everything ought to be brought back into conformance, and that because of the nature of what we do here, I think it's our obligation to be fairly strict with recording, according to the law. We have, we have other properties in front of us, which are on a much bigger scale, we have sort of similar problems with. And I think that it's, that it would be unfair to say, well, this is such a, I'm assuming that this may be where we're going with this, this is so small, it really doesn't matter. Well, I think we need to treat each one of our, people in our community the same, regardless of whether properties are big or small. The rules are the rules, and I don't see any mitigating justification to do anything but to strictly follow the rules here. That's my opinion. It sounds very tough, but I think we're here to be tough, unless there's reasons for us to, to, in the interest of the community, to find a way to change or bend or mitigate the circumstances that might change or bend those rules. I don't see it here.
Okay. So what I hear you saying is that with the expansion of the deck, assuming that the wetlands, the buffer line is correct, that that deck certainly would be within that 100 feet, as it was defined before. I have no idea what it is now. So what you're saying is that wouldn't be approvable?
I'm saying that going above the 110% and the extra 15%, that going beyond that is not approvable. So I think the wetland, they're two different issues, I believe.
All right. Even though the overage, I guess you might say, the building overage?
Sure.
Was actually due to the developer?
It doesn't matter.
No, I, I hear you.
Yes, even though it was due to the developer. And for someone to come in and say, oh gee, I didn't know, I sympathize with that, but that's not forgiveness. You know, ignorance isn't forgiveness, because anybody can come in and say, gee, I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't know the traffic rules. I'm sorry, officer, I come from a different state. You have a ticket anyway.
Outside of the fact that that particular square footage was approved, is there any other reason, other than the fact that it was approved?
No, I think there are, there actually are, because, again, when those rules were imposed, 110, 115, especially in this case, I believe, there are probably two good reasons for it. First is contextual, in terms of the neighborhood itself, which was probably an issue, but frankly, the other is it's conjoined with the wetland issue. It's another reason why you wouldn't want to see something larger if this building is, lies entirely within the buffer. That alone was a grant to build a home, so it's another reason why the 110 would have been especially important in this particular application. In some applications, perhaps where we see a request for going over 110, and we don't have a steep slope issue, we don't have a stormwater issue, we don't have a wetland issue, we don't have a tree clearing issue, stormwater prevention, that, I think, is probably a different kind of ask. This is a troublesome ask because of the location, the context, I think what Tom says is important to understand, but I think the wetland issue, when you, when you have that overlay it as well, it makes it that much more important. So it's not, I don't think it's just something, you know, shame on the folks who didn't catch it, shame on the folks who built it this way, and basically pushed the envelope and went beyond the envelope, but it was done for a reason. And it was not just something that was done because we just like 110% as a number. It's done for a reason. And we've been doing that now for a good 10, 15 years, and I think it was well thought out, and it's one of the reasons why we do it. I don't, I would encourage the applicant to look for other areas to perhaps decrease impervious surfaces, maybe do something even with the front walkway, which is currently slate. Perhaps you do something there to reduce the coverage. Perhaps the driveway doesn't have to be quite that big, maybe the turnaround can be reduced. These are gimmicks, frankly, I mean, the bottom line is, the sin has been occurred, has occurred because of the building. And you're unfortunately stuck with trying to find a solution to work with someone else's sin here.
Unfortunately, that doesn't respond to the building itself, which is already...
But it goes to the average, it goes to the coverage issue in the building.
Let's go slowly to that. The, in the, in one drawing, the wetlands buffer does not include the building or the driveway.
That's correct.
In the one that the town staff put together using an estimation process, it does. So that's a different story. So that's another reason to go and confirm where the wetland buffer ends. If it's receded, then, you know, that gets back to what Mr. Curley was saying, well, okay, do we really want to allow an exception, which will create other exceptions potentially down the road, which it inevitably does, unless we have a lot of offsetting mitigation that goes above and beyond what is necessary. And that's my opinion, it's not his, it's not anybody else's. But if it, if it turns out that the wetland has moved, and then the wetland buffer has moved, then everything is more difficult by far. And I, for one, am not going to say that anything that is built new in a wetland buffer is allowed, period. We don't like buildings that occur because there are human activities which recur, you know, which result in accidents, stuff spills on the ground, and then it goes into the wetland, and small quantities can be really, you know, a impact on the flora and fauna, particularly the fauna, in a wetland area. So first, you need a delineation. You need to have it updated, please, because I don't know how I can go any farther in evaluating this and trying to come up with something that's helpful.
So I think we had, Sabrina made some suggestions, and I think those would be appropriate. Clearly not what you wanted to hear, but it's something I think that we need to pursue, if you wish to pursue the application. Echoing Tom's comments, you know, very often applicants just think it's de minimis, but we look at these things in the aggregate, and they're not really de minimis. And so, you know, we, I think we can work with an applicant on this, but we need to see more, we need to understand more in terms of the wetland, but we, perhaps there's got to be something else here that we do in terms of the coverage and, and the planting plan for the wetland buffer, restoration, enhancement, perhaps something can come back as part of that planting plan that will actually improve the function of that wetland buffer from what it is now. That might be persuasive to members of the, on the board.
And does the deck have to be on the backside? Can it be on the other side?
Well, the kitchen is on the backside, so that was the reason for it.
Sure, I understand. That's often where it is. But if the deck is in a different place and it's not in the wetland buffer, then that might have some bearing on it. These are just speculative thoughts, theoretical.
So you'll be incorporating these comments in some sort of a minutes of the meeting? Okay.
Yeah, we all have minutes. But we don't, we don't send out a memo to you and, right?
No.
Don't send anything out covering this? No?
If you formally ask.
I mean, if you call the office, we can tell you what the board asked you to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can, there's comments and my comments too, as well.
Yeah. I mean, we put our comments in the memorandum, and I'm sure that, you know, if you call and you want to know about the wetland mitigation or what's necessary, Steve Coleman, our environmental coordinator, will be able to help you with that.
I guess if I could help here with respect to the conversation that we've had here tonight, supported by the staff memorandum, is that there is some sentiment that perhaps there should be no approval for the amount of square footage that's represented in the overage, you know, the new deck and so on. That's just a sentiment, which is not a decision by any means in this board. There is, however, I think, the request, and which I think would come with the requirement, if you choose to pursue it, to be sure that the wetland is appropriately mapped, and put that on the document so that we can come back and revisit the issue.
Okay. I just don't want to have the applicant come back and come back and come back, so that's why I'd like to be able to address all the issues.
We don't like you to come back and come back and come back either.
Nothing against you.
Come back is okay.
Yeah, no.
Come back is okay, but we, I agree, come back, come back, come back, come back. It's not that we prefer not to.
That's the only reason I ask that question.
So the reason, so I agree, and one of the reasons, I think, that the staff memos are so detailed is so that the issues can be addressed quickly and thoroughly, and to the extent that you don't...
And to the extent that you don't address them all and you come back, you're going to end up coming back again.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I personally do not like putting applications back on the planning board's agenda that not, have not fully addressed the planning board or staff's comments. Because I don't think it does anybody good to come back time and time again for the same thing.
Okay.
And we're more than help you, happy to help you if you call the office.
Sure. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
So we'll wait for you to come in with an exhibition, and then we'll get you scheduled for that. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you now.
Okay, we move now to our next matter. This is also a new, informal hearing for a new application. This is the Appel. I know I'll mispronounce the name, so I won't try, but Hammond Ridge Conservation Subdivision, Lot Number Three, Application for a Site Development Plan Amendment, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Approval for a Swimming Pool, 18 Hammond Ridge Road. So forgive me for the, I won't even attempt. It's my problem, not clearly not the applicant's.
Mr. Appel is with us. Mr. Appel is with us this evening. I'm Glenn Tysers, the landscape architect.
See, the good news, Sabrina, is you can tell the age difference. You're in, you're in the under 30 category, and the rest of us are way over it, so you should feel good about that.
I think Dick just might be even one generation removed from you.
Yeah, I'm sure.
He's to be true to me. Powerpoint.
Again, Glenn Tysers, representing Mr. Appel. We have before you a proposal for a swimming pool in the Hammond Ridge subdivision. The site is 2.92 acres in a two-acre zone. I wanted to start at least with the overall aerial, just to give a sense of context. The property is fairly isolated on the western side of Hammond Ridge Road. There are no immediate neighbors to the left or to the right. The closest neighbor directly across the street is about 357 feet away. Mr. Appel purchased this property almost two years ago. This is one also that was overcovered, or under on building, over on development coverage. When we first met Mr. Appel, I met with Steve Coleman briefly, just to find out, you know, specifics in terms of the Hammond Ridge subdivision. We sat down and went through a couple of scenarios, went through some files. We developed a plan, we had a pre-application meeting with staff, where we had a typical 20 by 40 pool with about, probably 600 or 700 square feet of terrace around it. It was brought to our attention at that time, that again, we get into the 10% for building, the 15% for development coverage. So the advice was to take another look and see how we can skin this thing down as much as possible. So the pool that's proposed is 16 by 30, 18 by 36 feet, smaller pool. It's unseen from neighbors, it's on the south side of the house, on a relatively level area of lawn. There are no issues with wetlands, there are no issues with grading and clearing limit lines. We've stayed away from all of that. It's modest in where it is. Part of our proposal was to, again, make the pool smaller, remove a majority of the terrace around the pool. There is a parking area you can see to the right of the driveway. We're proposing to take that out as mitigation. And there's a walkway to the west of the pool that we are also proposing to reduce the amount of development coverage. So the, the idea being, you know, a more modest pool, isolated. There is a homeowners association, Mr. Appel has met with them. There are no objections to this particular project. There is a similar program across the streets, as you can see at the bottom of that sheet, where there's a pool, driveway, house. I think Mr. Appel's property is much larger. It abuts the common area in the back. So we're here before you tonight to try to obtain a, an approval to proceed with that pool.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep.
I had a question. I know one of the comments that Sabrina raised was that we don't have a mapping with all the slopes. So can you tell us about the configuration, the slopes to the, you know, on the road itself, on Hammond Ridge Road? Do, are we going up to the house? What is that slope like? I don't have, we don't have our pointers tonight.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Arrow, use an arrow. There you go.
There you go. We don't have backup, backup?
Use the back arrow to back up if you need to.
This is the steep slope of this area.
Right, and so...
I'm sorry, there was, I thought there was a drawing, two drawings in front, before this one, which had, there, has the slopes on it.
Well, that has some grading, but this actually, this one actually has...
The natural slopes?
In the area.
As they exist.
As they exist.
But that doesn't, I'm sorry, the question was, where is the house relative in elevation to the road, and the houses across the road?
Yep. I think one of the concerns I have is, in looking at this, is that the, the pool is on the side of the home. We like to, you normally see the pools toward the rear of the home. And if there's a way of locating the pool behind, I don't know what the slope situation is.
It's generally flat behind the house. The, it does slope a bit, and we do get near that clearing and grading limit line. Just in terms of elevation of the house, the house is at about, the sill at the first, at the front door is 623. The road is like 595, where that access drive comes in, 596. So it's below.
So, so Glenn, one of the things that I think the planning board is asking for, and I referred to in my memorandum, is to really do the topography of the entire property. So that the planning board has a better understanding of why this location is a preferred location for the pool. So you said that there is some sloping behind the house, you know, but there is, you know, and to show that clearing and grading limit line in relation to the entirety of the property, so that they know what areas are available, what areas are not, and if they're not available, why not?
Sure. We could, I'm happy to do that. So what happens is basically, and I will map that, we will update the steep slopes plan to show that. But this seems to be the most level, reasonably accessed portion of the property. There is a lower floor with a door that comes out that can be used as a little changing room downstairs. So it steps away from the, the lower level. It's virtually unseen from the street. We do have some planting that we are proposing. There are about five trees that are ornamentals that will be moved onsite, and they actually will be moved within that area of disturbance.
Glenn, what is the structure in the back that has the walkways going through it? What is that?
It's a pergola. Pergola.
And that was original construction?
Nope, that was, there was a building permit issued for that, it was in the file, I'm going to say, seven or eight years ago. It's illegal, it's legalized.
Sabrina, do you want to run through your memo and get some highlights for us?
Sure, so the, the application meets all zoning setbacks, so there's no variances needed. Building coverage, it meets with the 2003 requirements, the stipulations put on building coverage. The issue comes into play again with development coverage. There was a 15% allowance on the approved building coverage of 6,425 square feet, so the limit as established by you was 7,388.75 square feet. The site, as it exists today with the proposed application, will, contains 8,835 square feet of development coverage, which is 1,446.25 square feet greater than allowed by the 2003 site plan approval.
That's as it exists now.
As it exists now, with the proposed pool. With the pool.
Does that account for the mitigations that, of impervious surface that they'll take off?
No.
No. They, they proposed it to reduce the coverage by 647 square feet through all of the things that were mentioned, the gravel driveway, so on and so forth. Ultimately, you would looking at a coverage, a total coverage of 9,468 square feet with, from today, an addition of, or a total addition over what was allowed of 1,280 square feet. That's the amount that you would be looking, they would be looking for you to approve. We talked about the environmental impacts, finishing out the steep slope analysis of the property, identifying where that clearing and grading limit line is in relation to the work right now. There is no work proposed beyond the clearing and grading limit line. One of the things that was inaccurately shown was the 150-foot wetland setback. You have it what looks like to be coming from the actual water course. Are there wetlands surrounding that?
No, that's an excellent question. Steve had provided that drawing, and he wanted the measurement taken from that stem.
Okay. So, so we'll have to check with him, and maybe you can get something from him stating that that's the way he wanted it interpreted. And I know that there's a slope there that is indicative of, of where the change is. But we need something for the file that explains that, because that's not typical as to how we do that.
Right.
Bob reviewed the stormwater aspects, and then the question I had was, was there any proposed outdoor lighting associated with the pool?
No, the only lighting would be underwater lighting in the pool.
Yeah. So, so for the board's information, this is considered a type 2 action in accordance with CECLR. If you can put the tax map ID on all of the plans as well as a north arrow, which would be helpful for review.
Sure.
That's all.
Could you run through the numbers again, because I was confused by the development? I'm not sure what the existing situation is right now without the pool, and what the approval was, and where we are. I thought I heard that we are over what was approved, approvable with the 15%, and we're going even further. Right?
8,835 square feet is what is on this site right now.
That's what's there now.
Correct.
And what is, or was approved in the original?
Seventy three.
7,388.75 square feet.
It's 1,446 over right now.
Correct.
How did it get to be 14 over, do we know?
No, we do not know.
We don't know. When Mr. Appel bought this, because I had asked him, I said, you know, it's beautiful out there, very nice, who did the work? He says, I have no idea, this was all done prior. It's a similar story, you've heard the last guy mention.
Except someone multiplied the numbers by a factor of 10.
Well, all I can tell you is that it's not the result of Mr. Appel. There are building permits for the pergola and things that may have put it over, I'm not sure. Not sure why. There's some walkways on this property to get to the back doors. There's not a lot of fluff. I mean, there's a front walkway, obviously, there's, there's back walkways. There is a entertaining terrace behind the house.
Let me be sure I understand what you're saying. So are you suggesting that the original house that was built, that it itself was over the, over the limit? Because you're saying, are you saying you can't find, you can't find in the existing other areas enough to make up how much?
Well, yeah, once we, if we add up all the walks and the driveway and the additional parking area, that's how it gets ramped up. So I am sure that...
I think.
Yeah. I'm sure of that.
Okay.
The house is the house.
But to clarify the numbers, what we're also proposing now with the pool is a net 647 square feet additional, so that means we will be approximately 2,000, 2,100 feet over with the pool. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
And so that, over what was originally proposed, it's almost a one-third increase over the 6,425. So it's a very substantial increase. We, we granted a 15% allowance, but it's still a very substantial change. Okay. I just wanted to get the numbers, make sure I understood them. Thank you. Okay, Bob, you had some, some thoughts?
Sure. Just one more comment, obviously, they're in East Hudson Watershed. They're disturbing more than 5,000 square feet based on what they show on the plan, so obviously they have to get a DEC SWIP NOI from the state. Number ST1, ST2, I would recommend highly that you do the deep test holes and perk rates, which might cut down on the amount of stormwater infiltrators.
They may.
Because right now, you just used flat-out capacity of the infiltrators without taking into account any absorption rate of the soil.
Right, and once we do the soil testing, we'll amend that.
Which might save you at least...
May I talk to Barry about it already?
Will Barry be doing that for you?
Yes.
Highly recommend you do it, you'll save some money. G1, based on the steep slope study, based on the work they're doing and the limits of disturbance, there's no steep slope permit required. It's pretty nominal, in light of the fact that you want to see other steep slopes for planning purposes around the site. That was G1. Now, G2, they have access coming out onto the roadway, not using the existing driveway. They'll have to get a street opening permit from the Department of Public Works. G3 is a minor typo. You show one area being 6,500 for the area disturbance, the other one you have to match up.
It's been corrected.
Obviously.
Yep.
And basically, G4, which takes up one whole seater, standard notes we like to see on all the plans, just to cover all the bases for retaining walls, as-built, stormwater inspections, and clearing and grading limit line delineation. And that's it.
Okay. Okay. Thoughts, comments from board members?
It's a big ask. I'm really, this is interesting, because I, to me, it's interesting, because we've seen these sorts of things before, and I think we're going to be seeing a lot more of them. That's my impression. And so it gets back to, I think, a number of issues. This, this number of questions, not issues. The, and this is, I want to be sure that, when I say this, I'm also including the last, not excluding the last applicant. One of the questions that comes to mind is, how do we come up with these numbers to begin with? You know, we came up with 6,000-something for this piece of property. How did we arrive at that? Was that some standard zoning percentage on this size lots that, that we applied? I'm not saying that it was zoning, but it's something that we put in there as a restriction for development. What were our criteria back then? And I don't know what they were.
I don't know. We were, we used them on this, on this project.
We did.
So...
I, I happen to believe it's, it's one of our more successful projects. I mean, I go there every once in a while when I'm on that side of town. And I think it's, it's quite successful. I'm sorry, Sabrina.
No, I was going to say, just to kind of, to give you a sense, that the town zoning code require, has development coverage within it. It's a formula based on the size of your property, your square footage. As a conservation zone, in the past, I've seen the board adjust that due to the conservation nature of the development. And instead of like, if it's a one-acre numbers, you drop it down to half-acre number calculation.
Right. And so I, I am aware that the zoning, that our zoning has stipulations on, on coverage. I happened, and I remember those were re-legislated recently. I don't know how recently, a few years ago, where they, maybe I'm wrong about that.
No.
But in my opinion, from what I remember, they are, I think they're actually quite aggressive. They're maybe, probably, in my opinion, they're too big. But that, those numbers would apply here, in this particular case.
No.
Right?
No.
And so we sort of made this up based on some feeling, and I don't know how we did it, but, but it was done... did it, but, but it was done based on certain criteria of that time, which is 2003. And I guess we thought that that was just our understanding of the market, what size homes are, what the reasonable, you know, for the size of lot, what would be sort of a reasonable, reasonable size house. Now, things change, and people now want to improve their property. Now, they can bring greater resources to the lot, to their home, and they want to build a swimming pool, build a tennis court, right? And I wonder if it were true that this subdivision was coming before us now, and we were approving the, the original subdivision now, if it, if we had demonstrations of homes that had this much coverage as being appropriate in the marketplace today, I wonder whether we'd say, no, that's too much, or, yeah, okay, it makes sense. So, it's, it, it really almost challenges what we're doing up here, and how do we decide? I mean, if, if we would say, well, this is like another 10%, just to put a number on, this is another 10% over. Should we then say, make some sort of a judgment, make some sort of a declaration that all the homes in the subdivision, all the lots in the subdivision, automatically we'll get an extra 10%? So, it's tough for me to get my arms around, and, and one of the things that I go back to is, well, what we want to be sure is that the subdivision is not overdeveloped, you know, we worry about that a lot.
Sure.
And we had those concerns at the beginning, and I'm not sure that we're wrong about that now, but it just seems to me that things are put a little bit in play here.
Well, we, you know, since I was around for some of the stuff, and this one in particular, and even when we came up with those rules, this was the result of our impatience with subdivision applications that were coming in with unrealistic site plans for individual sites as we looked at a big parcel. And what we were finding was that later on, when they came in for their site development, then we started to see these much larger impacts to the individual lots. And what we felt was happening was, our entire review was being compromised. We were looking at it with certain assumptions in terms of slopes, wetlands, buffers, trees, et cetera. And then later on, instead of, remember, we used to get those little squares, it would be a 1,200-foot high ranch square put in the middle somewhere, and then the actual plan would come in later on for this enormous house with all these improvements, tennis courts, et cetera. And we just felt that what we were doing was, it was a segmented approach that way, it wasn't integrated, and that's why we said, from now on, give us a realistic rendition of what you're going to be looking at. And it was, I joked the other night, but it was Bob Anisi who came up and said, look, we will also give some sway to people. And what we came up with was the 10 and 15% sway cushion, because we recognize things do change, markets do change, needs change, et cetera. But it was because we were looking at these things, and we did look at this. This was one of ours that we looked at, that was with the town of North Castle, and I think our site is more successful, frankly. And, and that's why it came about. I can tell you, the, the one that started it was another application that really got us and was very frustrating, and that's why we started doing this, because it was, we were really being, I think our work was being compromised.
You know, that's, that's, I, I forget all that detail. You are now officially the board historian, because.
I'll teach you.
I do, I do remember the application, and I remember that, that one of the considerations that we were, that, that the site really presented to us, one of the challenges was the steep slopes and the nature of, of the topography there and the vegetation, and it was, it was challenging to get it right. But I, again, you know, and going back there, I, I think we got it right.
Mm-hmm.
I would add that, that one of the, one of the reasons to do it this way is that we're taking, in essence, virgin land, and we're taking it out of that category and putting it into a suburban kind of setting, and we wanted to, to, I believe at least, keep some sort of nature still there and not disturb the steep slopes, as you just were alluding to, and not impinge upon wetland setbacks and everything else, so that it would be harmonious as possible, as opposed to, you know, the, the earlier one where Bob pointed out to me that the original subdivision was laid out in 1890, and.
Before my time.
Huh?
Officially, it was before my time. Before, there's another wise guy comment. Oh, cut him off. It was coming, wasn't it?
It was.
I think also, you would take into consideration, you know, what positive steps have been made environmentally, too. I mean, so, for instance, with this, we're off steep slopes, no wetlands, this is in somebody's lawn, right now it's lawn. Also, the increase in the focus on stormwater, I mean, when I worked with Bob, and we're doing a number of things now, I mean, these kinds of things that we're doing today, we weren't doing 10 years ago. You know, so, you know, the intent of limiting development also was a reaction to stormwater and runoff and impervious surface. So, I think you do have to consider, or at least, yeah, I guess, consider, you know, if these things are going to happen, which, you know, people are going to be lining up to do things just like this, you know, if there is a glimmer of that kind of thing happening, what are the controls, what are the sort of belt and suspenders to prevent something from happening? Which was really, when I think back, you know, all of the control and the limits to growth were based on all of those environmental factors. And so, now, when, for instance, when we're talking about a swimming pool, forget the coverage for, for the moment, but, you know, the swimming pool doesn't really shed water. I mean, water falls into the pool, it's not being shed off. However, and Bob's absolutely right, when you draw down that winter water, where's that going to go? So, we, every project we're involved in, no matter whether it's in this community or others, you have to account for all of that. Not only do you account for that, you have to count for, account for all of the drainage adjacent to that. So, anything that's been touched has really been collected and treated, you know, so whether it's in, in-ground infiltration, and, you know, there's many levels of that. I think there are those safeguards in place that there weren't when some of these, maybe numbers were developed.
I understand, and you used, you used water as just, as one example, and there are more, obviously.
Herbicides.
And we have, you know, some of the best engineers to be sure that we're up to date on that.
Yes.
And so, that criteria is being applied as an engineering mitigation or engineering solution.
Yep.
No matter what the size of the site is, right?
Correct.
And no matter where it is with respect to its environmental impacts, we always do that. So, I'm not sure that that, so therefore, I'm not necessarily, that returns to the, what I think is the essential question is, which has to do with density, for sort of the bulk and mass of the building and the occup, and the occupation of the ground itself with development. I think that's where I'm going. I think the engineering pretty much solves the other problems, thankfully, and, and our team does a pretty good job of staying on top of that stuff.
They do.
So, for me, the question again is, do we look at, do we now look at this differently? Do we, if we say to this particular applicant, yeah, we're going to look at things differently now, and the 2,000 is not, 2,000 square feet, whatever it is, is really not out of reason, the extra 230 feet for the previous applicant is not really in this context that big a deal. It's, it's just where we are now today in the growth of our community. And so, I, I, again, I'm sort of, I'm talking a lot, but actually, I'm speechless on this because I don't know what to say, other than it's, it's a conundrum for me.
You know, I, I took a few minutes this afternoon to drive over to the property and have a look around, and I agree, it's a very beautifully successfully done subdivision. It's, it's really lovely. But I, I wanted to have a look around because I want to see, I didn't go on your property, but you know, just.
Oh, you're welcome.
No, no, without permission.
Take it out.
But I wanted to see, you know, where the two houses across the street lay in relation, and, and you know, these are, these are big, beautiful, stately homes, and I think, you know, we've seen it over and over again that in, as people, as, as homes change hands and as people utilize their homes, they want to add amenities like a swimming pool. It's not an unusual ask, and we've seen it on much smaller pieces of property where we've been able to accommodate swimming pools. So, you know, leaving the, the development coverage aside, I don't think it's unreasonable that a house of this size with a piece of property this size wouldn't be able to comfortably accommodate a small pool. That's, I'm just speaking for, for myself. What I did notice, though, is that, for me, the location of the pool in the side yard is a little bit problematic, because it does have, even though there's, there are elevation changes, I think it does have visibility from the road, which would not be ideal in such a beautifully laid-out subdivision. And because it appeared to me, and you could confirm it with actual elevations, but it appeared to me that in particular, one of the houses across the street was at a high elevation, and perhaps the other one was too, and I know there's a lot of rock outcroppings, but if I could look up into their windows, it's potential that they could look down from their windows into that pool. So, if there would be a way to put it in the backyard, and is that a conservation easement behind that house?
Yes.
So, you know, you, there are, there is another road, and there are houses, but there seem to be a, a distance between them. But if it, if there would be a way to accommodate, or to demonstrate a pool in the backyard that did not impact the steep slopes, and I didn't see what was in the backyard, so I, I can't address whether there are steep slopes back there that would be impacted or not.
I'll do the steep slope study, yeah. The, the sighting of the pool was, was really based on, it's, and I do have photographs of this site, if you haven't seen that. It's relatively flat. So, it required the least amount of disturbance, because you come basically right in, build, move the five trees, build the pool, and again, it's off the house, that's the lower level, which is kind of the recreation area in the bottom of the house. So, it made sense functionally from how they use the house and how they would use that property. I could look about some other areas. My sense is that we're going to find that there's going to be, it's going to be that much further away, there's going to be that much disturbance to get there to, to construct it. It's not as ideal with the in and out of typically of, of family using a pool and going to the john and that kind of thing, being, being further away. They seem sort of ideal. If the issue is with visibility, I am sure we could screen that. I've been there with leaves on the trees and leaves off the trees.
Wouldn't it require a, a variance, first of all, because it's on the side yard?
It, no, it's not. It's, it's not within the front yard. The variance is required for the front yard.
Just for the front yard.
Correct. One of the things that I neglected to mention was that a tree removal permit will be required to be submitted. I spoke with Steve today, and I know that they want to relocate the five trees. Steve would be looking for a maintenance bond on those, on the trees that you're trying to relocate, and then an additional, if the trees don't survive, there'll be a replacement requirement.
Yep.
Or a certain percentage replacement requirement based on the trees that you're relocating. So, he liked those calculations.
Yeah, I gave him those. So, I think he has the paperwork.
They need to be submitted as part of this application.
Yeah, I did. I think he should have that.
Not, there was no tree permit application submitted.
Really?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make sure he has that. I think there's only one tree that trips the, it's like the 1/8 inch tree.
Right.
That would fall in that jurisdiction, and I believe that's all been taken care of, but if not, I'll make sure he has it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, but let's give you, because things happen, so we'll give you another 50%. But it's not. You should make sure you submit enough copies for the board.
Yes, will do.
Anyway, I, it does, it does strike me that Sheila makes a very good point about the location of the pool. I think there's ample room in the back. Perhaps there's some changes with the pergola, but I don't think the clearing and grading limit line is an issue at all for this modest pool if we had it in the back. I think the location there would be pretty good, because it would have the southwest exposure, so that's ideal for a pool. So, and there's, you know, the, maybe, that would also lend itself to some changes in some of the coverage that we have here with some of these walks, and that can all be reconfigured, and we can reduce some of this coverage and, and get it back within some realm of where we were initially.
Well, one of the, sorry. I, I, I'm looking at the drawing, and I'm seeing, is this, yeah, sorry. I'm seeing the stone, that was where the pergola is, to the west of that, I think it's west, must be.
West.
Right. Is a, it looks like it's a barbecue.
It's a fire, there's a fireplace there.
Is it a bar, yeah, right.
Yep.
And then there's a stone patio behind it.
Yes.
And is that, is that the surface you stand on to, to barbecue?
It could be, it's really a fireplace, so it's seating on both sides.
Okay.
It's one of the fireplaces that are open on both sides.
Got it.
Yep.
Because I, I'm not sure, again, we don't know what the grades are here.
Not to interrupt you guys.
No, please.
Max, please.
Come on, come up, please. I think the grade must go up from there.
Yeah, I just want to add one comment. I know you might not remember it exactly, but from the pergola area is a staircase going down of around 12 steps.
Going to which direction?
Towards that pool. It's in very faint color right there, and then there's a staircase behind it that we would be removing as part of the coverage area.
Oh, what's it?
So, I'm just trying to point out to you, from the point of view of, if you, you know, when you mentioned the idea of putting the pool behind the house, I would have loved to have done that, but the, there are massive slopes back there, and as, all I'm trying to point out is the slope from the pergola to where the pool is, you know better than I in terms of feet, but, you know, it's that staircase down.
10 feet.
So, I just, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to.
No, it's okay, which again, is the importance of, of fully.
Excuse me, for the record, that was Mr. Appel.
Yeah, thank you. But that gets back to the importance of showing the entire site in the, with the steep slopes in the analysis.
There's also a well.
Sorry, can I just say one thing? In the steep slopes analysis, yes, but also an existing topography plan.
Yeah, we'll have that, yep.
Okay, thank you.
We have the topography right now only in the area, but we'll do the whole site.
I, I, if we need the whole site, that's fine. I think within the grading and clearing limit line is, is fine for me, but we want the whole site, we want the whole site.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
There was, there is a well in the backyard. I'll just have to find out where that is.
I think that may be located. I'll check, hope they'll check the survey.
Okay.
Well, we're, we're not in the business of site planning this tonight, and you guys are just site planters.
We understand.
But I think the, I, I wholeheartedly support Sheila's concerns about this and the recommendation that, that the pool be located in a place which really is more proper and natural for these things, which is behind the house and in the, in the rear yard. So, if there's a, I, I think that, my, personally, I think that ought to be explored, and.
Take a look at it.
So, we can find out what the consequences are, and, you know, what the impacts are, and how to mitigate, and whether it makes any sense at all. Right now, we just don't know enough about it.
Sure. We'll look at it.
Okay. All right, and if you can take care of the other, you know, the items, and Springer's note, and Bob's note, so we'll have those marked up correctly.
We've already started.
Great.
I mean, there's, I mean, I, we happen to focus on behind the, the pergola, but there's this whole sort of northern wing of the house where these, these arcing walks are at the end of the, sort of, the end of the driveway in there.
Right.
Might be another location.
Yeah, I'll just point out, that's where the well is, literally right where you're.
Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Well, we need that on the drawing, too. Thank you.
We'll update it.
Are the septics located on here?
Yes.
They're down here.
Ah, great. Yep, got it, got it. Okay.
Okay.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a zoning board referral, and this is for the Presbyterian Insurance, application for a special use permit amendment, 605 Millwood Road. As I understand it, this is a mandatory referral to the planning board by the ZBA.
It is a code requirement in accordance with the special use permit provisions in the town code that the ZBA refer to you special permit applications. To date, this board has no permits that would be issued in relation to this application, but you do have an opportunity to comment through the referral process.
Okay, so I guess you can tell us what you're doing, and?
Sure, I, I have a little presentation stick to quickly do that.
Do you want?
On the right side.
Anytime.
Okay, so I, try and be sorry.
For being polite.
That's exactly what I did. I think I did. He got very angry, too.
I know.
Something new for him.
We're ready. That's okay, that's no problem. So I'm Peter Gator, the architect, and Milton from my office with me here. The owners are with me here as well, and any operational questions may arise. Sabrina's correct, we, we were at the zoning board last week, and we'd been working with the town versus submissions, and then since, I think, December of last year, and it's been submitted memos, and we responded to them, and revised drawings, added notes, and done a series of things to kind of comply and keep, keep things moving, and are very happy. And then last week, I received a memo from Bob, just before the meeting last week. We addressed it at the meeting, and it was, it was a, there was a memo we addressed, we responded to it on, right after the meeting, a couple of comments actually about the railing, thank you for that. And so we responded to the drawing form as well as a written narrative, and answered sort of the things we have to look at, and get a set up a meeting and work with you and to accomplish your requests. In terms of planning, we, we did, you know, we sort of, the whole thing is a genesis, I can run through my slides kind of quickly to show you, but the, the, the work is in the back of the building, and the genesis of the entire project really is a failing retaining wall that was done a long time ago, and it's failing, and the wall in front of it's failing. And because the nature of the, the wall situated where it is, it's, it's a lower level, holding up some area behind, and approaches a lower level, which is the main great hall of the church, which is for post-church functions, as well serves as a voting site. So I'll kind of run through the photos now, some, just some site photos, you can kind of go through, Milton. This is overview site, we're looking at the back view, so the church is, actually, my pointer, let's see if this works here. There you go. So this is the site right around here. Next. And then this is the opposite view, we're talking about this area here, the main, is the entrances in front here, there's parking lot, parking lot, upper parking, this great goes up about 40, 50 feet from the road up to here. And this is actually a lower level, you'll see in a second, existing building. And so the failing walls we're talking about is actually this whole section, it turns the corner, and this wall, too, is actually failing by extension. So we're talking again about this wall here, and this wall here, which is holding back this upper grass section, we'll turn to it in a second. And this is a door into the great hall I was just referring to a second ago. Next. This is a view from the lower park, looking toward the, so you can see it's kind of scooped out here, and that failing wall is back in here, and this, but this is not, this is saturated, and this wall is also failing, too. So the genesis again was to necessitate to repair this whole wall, hold everything back, hold this back. And then with that, we decided to look at a way of improving it, as well as creating some more landscape to have with it, as well as creating functional space down here, as well as reducing the amount of water runoff and such towards the building. Next. This is a view looking for the street, so you can't really, the edge would be right, you can't even see it, where would it be? This is all natural, we're not touching this. Next. These stairs connect currently to the upper parking lot, we'll call it, down to just the second floor of the main, the church, which will now would connect to the lower level. The air conditioning condenser units we talk, refer to right here, so it's kind of noisy, and it's right above the patio, so we're relocating those. This is the area of the, the area in question here, that's failing right now. This is a view from the backyard, from the house back there, one neighbor, a view from the other neighbor's house, again, you can't see it, that's kind of the point. This is a view from the other neighbor's house, which will be right here. Next. And this is a view from the side neighbor. You may, you may know him as, you know who he is, but he's the next door neighbor, lives over here. And, and this is a view from pastor's house, who lives up on the hill. Next. So here's the existing site plan. I'm sure you're familiar with these drawings, so I'll just kind of be brief, any questions you can ask me. Retailing wall is this dash line here, and this dash line here. Next. And this is what we're proposing, so the existing dash line wall is here, and the upper one is about here, that we're proposing, expanding the patio a little bit, and having some, just general area, basically, instead of having a 20-foot tall wall to retain it, we're stepping up in two 10-foot sections, we're having a stepped area, so it gradually comes back up, and it steps again, and this will all be nice grass landscape buffered area here. So again, here's the, the height distance from this up to here is over about 21 feet, so rather than have a large retaining wall or two 10-foot sections, we sort of broke up the massing, incorporated natural landscaping on the side, natural stone that replicates the existing wall we're trying to replicate, as well as increasing the grass area that's there now on the upper section here to get to the upper parking lot. Next. And this is a view from the same view from before, the side, so the staircase I was talking about earlier, we would redo those for safety, but then have a small staircase that connect down here. Again, you see the grass area as well here, and then the natural buffers on the sides and in front of the rock foundation wall here. There's a technical section, so upper parking is where my red dot is, this is where the patio is, existing building is right here. So this is the patio section, the sort of the stepped area here, interlocking ready rock system here, weeping proper channels, step footing, all grade and grass and such to get to the upper parking here, and what's, and then, yes, this is the, oh, then this is a proposed lighting plan, so I heard some of those lighting comments last time, and Sabrina brought some good lighting questions last week, and we had these drawings. But really what it is, is just a couple of very, very soft step lighting in here to kind of light your way, and that's, that's really it. And then, depends on the trees and landscape, we're considering some, some soft uplighting as well. Next slide might show it.
How high are those lighting posts?
There's no posts.
They're just in the ground?
Right, so see, so do you see this? These are embedded in the steps, so next slide. So it would be this sort of look.
Okay.
You wouldn't even see them, they're face down, just enough, there's no, there's no light spillage.
Very nice.
And this is sort of, these are soft, next one, actually has some cuts. Right, so this is just a blob of embedded block, and this is about three inches long embedded as well, come in very dark colors, and it's a shield, as you see, for, for light pollution. Next. And that's really it, so.
That was a great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Take that. Beautiful.
Question. Did I misunderstand the drawings, or is there an oil tank that's going to be moved?
Yes, so, let's see, you want to pop back? I'll show you. So, yes, there is. Just goes, it's a proposed site plan.
Please state your name and speak into the microphone.
Robert Marlowe, trustee. Yeah, the oil tank was removed legally. We had a contractor come in and, was it Robeson?
Robeson.
Yeah, Robeson removed that. No contamination, samples were taken, so we moved it in on the inside, so.
It's, so the tank is now, where?
Inside. Inside. Inside.
Thank you. Good solution.
Okay, any comments, questions? If not, should we direct staff to issue a memo to say we, we have no issues, no problems with the application as proposed? Does that sound okay?
Sounds okay to me.
That's as glowing as we get.
Does the board wish to see the draft memo before it is circulated, or should we just work with the chair?
I think that, yeah.
Okay, we'll show it to you.
Yeah, okay.
Given the quality of your, your, your presentation, you might want to start advertising that you got your project through in five minutes.
Yeah, I should have gone first.
Sure you say something on our blog, give us five stars or something.
Sure will. I'll give you all good Yelp reviews or whatever it is.
Right, exactly.
Yelp.
We, we, we put you on last, so you could see how bad it could have been.
Yeah, I appreciate it. You actually had some salient comments, and I presented a lot of different places, and all your thoughts were, I thought were good, so.
Yes, you listened.
Yeah.
The staff.
Yeah, staff's been great so far, so I look forward to working with everybody else to continue it, so thank you.
Thank you, okay, great. Okay, we have next a resolution, and this is the resolution for the Campfire Club of America. This was the application for a wetlands permit, steep slopes permit, tree removal permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 230 Campfire Road. I have such confidence that they didn't show up, they're just ready for the resolution.
Thanks.
They do carry guns, though.
We're ready.
Okay. Any questions, comments on the draft resolution?
Greg is absent, that's my big comment.
Yes.
Ah.
Good catch, Sheila, because we would have missed that one.
Well, Steve's also not here.
That's true.
In the same vein, thank you.
And Colin's here.
And Colin is here. Janice is not here.
I have a question on page.
Colin's here.
Twelve.
I'm sorry.
I got all the way to twelve.
Page twelve.
Wow. That's fast. Well, that's because I started reading from the back.
Planning board dyslexia really comes in, it really helps. What page is that?
This is a standard phrase, and I'm just.
What line?
B, line six.
What page?
Twelve of seventeen.
And you're on B?
Is that boiler?
Sight lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay. I, I'm just curious as to, why don't we allow sight lighting? Wouldn't that cut down on theft? Or is lit?
I'm, I can't answer as to the origin of this regulation. Bob, can you? But I would, I would also, on the flip side, I'd say that they probably have this restriction so that there's not lighting on sites 24/7 to disrupt neighborhoods.
I know, but this, then, but this might be an exception, because it's not a neighborhood.
I don't know if this is a requirement of code. I'd want to look into that before we changed it.
Sure, I understand, perfectly reasonable.
Do you want me to look into it?
Yes, please, I would.
Okay, fine. I thought you were looking to me as if I was going to know the answer, but I was here before we had lights also.
She was trying to poll the board.
Just making sure that's why you want me to do. So, so let me ask you a question, provided, and I'm jumping the gun here, provided there are no other questions that we need to look into, would looking into and reflecting the current code or not be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, so if the code does not require sight lighting for construction purposes to be limited?
I think it's good, a good condition to have, because usually we do see construction within neighborhoods in our town.
Yeah, this would be the exception.
That would couch it as an exception.
Yeah.
If they want to do it.
If you wish to, but.
But even if they lit it 24/7, who would be around to notice if anybody were on the property?
Right.
It's such a huge piece of property, and I, I don't know if it's even, are they, if they even have gates that they close at night.
Is theft, is theft a concern here, even?
Well, I would think it is just as much as anyplace.
So I, I would tend to think that this involves sight lighting for construction purposes during the construction, subjectively limited to the minimum required by applicable labor regulations. I would assume, like, for example, you know, in the wintertime, when it gets dark out, there needs to be a certain amount of light for the employees to be constructing.
Well, it's probably OSHA-related.
Yeah.
You have to have certain lighting.
What I, what I would suggest.
Recommend keeping it in, I mean.
Yeah, me, too.
These are good reasons to keep them, and I mean, I, my opinion of it is, it never hurts to have more notes than what you really need, and if it's applicable, it'll be enforceable.
And if there is a.
Just my opinion.
Right, and if there's a special concern on the site with respect to theft or something else, the applicant can raise that, and then we can address it that way at that point. I would leave it.
I would leave it, too, yeah.
You would what?
I would leave it as written per Bob's recommendation.
All right, all right.
Everyone good?
Okay, page fourteen. This is even smaller. On item thirteen, line forty-one, submission of a payment to the town of Newcastle for a cost estimate fee. Review fee?
Yeah, that's standard, because I have to spend time reviewing the estimates they submit.
Sure, should we say it's a review fee?
Cost estimate.
What's her review for the cost? Cost estimate, review fee, sure.
The cost estimate review fee.
You're not doing the cost estimate, you're doing a review, which is right.
Right, I'll be reviewing the cost as that's.
Okay.
It's a fee to review the cost estimate.
Okay, I love that, too. Done.
Payment of $100.
Now, that we can change on a standard basis.
Yes, it can.
How do you know? You have to check the regs, don't you?
The reg is right there.
Pardon me.
That's fine by me, you want to change that, then. I have no objection to that, personally.
This is a town engineer.
You know, Dick, some people go an entire lifetime without leaving their mark.
That's true, I do, and I'm still, you know, here trying to, you know, anyway, let that be your moment. Thank you, you're too kind.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
No, I don't have any.
You're okay, Jennifer, with you, so, okay. So, as, as amended, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We have now a request for an extension. The first one we have is for Citron, this is the Manic Subdivision Lot Number One. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat and final subdivision plat approval, lot merger, IPP, steep slopes permit, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, and steep stormwater pollution plan approval, 123 and 127 Westwood Drive. So I understand that there are no issues or problems with this extension. I think Jennifer and Sabrina, you didn't have any issues with it?
Correct.
And this, does anyone else have any issues?
Nope.
I, I have a question. I just need to be reminded of this, because we're going to be talking about another one also, and the extension on this one is ongoing, looks like it's going to go on for a while. At least all the evidences, I don't know that for a fact, but the evidence in front of us looks like that, that's the case. So if, if, in the period of time that, within the extension period, there are regulations that change, rules that change, that then apply to new applications, are these applicants grandfathered in, so they don't have to, they don't have to revise their application because of, even though the rules have changed, like for wetlands or whatever it might be? They're grandfathered in?
I think it depends, I think you have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
What that, what's that mean?
That means, I don't think there's a generic answer to that. I think you have to look at the facts and circumstances of each application.
So it's discretionary, so we get to decide? I mean, I don't know what that means.
I, I think so, and.
No, I mean, there's, there's a body of law regarding when, when rights to an approval vest, as far as, you know, if there's changes in regulations, but I, without applying that body of law to the specific facts and circumstances of the application, I don't think we can make a general statement, or at least I wouldn't be comfortable making a general statement as I sit here tonight to provide you with that.
Fair enough, fair enough, because I, this, the extensions, apparent, they're going to, I mean, it's two, coming on two years, they're asking for another year, another for one of the applications, and I think three for another one, I forget what it was, but it, it's, and they're, from what I understand, they're still doing fundraising, so I don't know how long-
That's for the next application.
I know, I was actually referring to the next one. Forgive me, we should go to that one. But it's just another, it's an example of what I think maybe becomes a concern after a while.
Well, we did, historically speaking, we've had situations like this in the past. So, the one I recall was an application that went, was actually active for various, at various stages for about 23 years. That was Grace, Grace Subdivision.
Yeah.
And at one point, there was a very material change in the wetlands law after they had been granted approvals, and there were a number of extensions, but it got to the point where finally the board said, "Look, we're going to grant another one." It was a substantial one, maybe a year, year and a half, something like this, and they just had to get it together. Otherwise, it would lapse, and then the new rules and regulations would come into play, and that's ultimately, apparently, what happened with that application. The new rules came into play, and basically, when you started looking at to do 150-foot setbacks, the application fell apart.
Right.
So, we had that, and there was another one that we had that was very similar to that, and-
There was another one.
That, the subdivision, that half of it was built and the other half-
Brandywine.
Yeah.
Brandywine, of course.
Brandywine, yes.
Same exact thing.
We did the same thing.
Yep.
And in that case, we notified the applicant that, you know, this was the last extension they would receive, and that they would have to reapply if they were to move forward for the environmental permits in the subdivision.
Yep, and that's what happened.
Yes.
Ultimately, those were all new, new applications back to us on those last, what, four or five lots that we found-
Correct, correct.
So, it can be, I think with fair warning, it's a very fair thing to do, and in those cases, there were actually material changes in the regs. There are no changes in the regs. I mean, you know, what's the big deal? But anyway, so is-
So, getting back to Citron.
Yeah, going back to Citron. Any questions, issues, and if not, is there a motion to grant the extension?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we come to the next extension, and this is for the Upper Westchester Muslim Society, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, signage, and site plan by, site plan by town engineer, 130 Pinesbridge Road. So, anyway, again, we have a request for an extension on this application.
I'm happy to speak, Mr. Chair. Good evening, thank you very much, members of the board. As you recall, my name is Dan Richmond, I'm with the law firm Zerrin and Steinmetz. The Upper Westchester Muslim Society, as you recall, went through vigorous review both by this board and the zoning board. I would just, I mean, to the question you had on the previous application, I'm not aware of any change in the law that affects this application. I would also say, I mean, that in what Jennifer said, there is the vested rights doctrine, and there has been some thinking, particularly from the Court of Appeals in a recent decision called Glacial Aggregates, which indicated that the money that an applicant spends in the application process enough can be enough to help invest rights, and I would submit that here where they did an EIS and substantial review.
So, do you, I'm sorry, let me just ask a question about, so are those rights vested in perpetuity?
I would, I mean, that's our position, yes. I mean, but again, I mean-
It's your position, but what about this case you cited?
Glacial aggregates, I mean, had to do with a mining application where they went, they originally-
I'm sorry, I don't need to know the details of the case.
Sure.
I'm just asking whether the rights are granted in perpetuity.
Once right, it's vest, they vest, yes, you have those rights.
It's a vested, it's a property right.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Like a constitutional property right.
But again, the Upper Westchester Muslim Society is eager to move forward with this project, just, it has, there were a lot of conditions imposed by this board and the zoning board that have taken it time to incorporate into its plans.
And I'm, I'm just curious on one thing-
Sure.
-because it's my background. As I recollect, there was an issue with percolation. Did that get resolved?
I'm not sure what issue, but I mean, we've resolved issues on this application a long time ago, I mean-
I think that was really the county, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The septic.
Yeah, the septic.
And some discussions I had with county, Westchester County Department officials, last time I spoke to them several months ago, they, they told me, anyway, I haven't, I can't confirm whether it's true now, but they were still awaiting some sort of design report from the applicant, which was several months ago, but I have not checked recently.
I'll double check that, but my, my understanding is that we're-
That may have changed, I don't know. You might want to check that.
Will do, absolutely.
So, getting back to the, to the vested situation, does this mean that what we are doing here by this procedural thing we do, right, by granting extensions, is it really just ineffectual? I mean, does it really, it's just for old internal procedures because
No.
the applicant is asking for, is he vested at this point?
That's, I can't answer that question again because it's based on particular facts and circumstances of the case. So, there have been some, there have been some cases that say that rights don't vest until foundations are in the ground.
I would-
There are some cases, like Dan just referred to, the Glacial Aggregate case, that this has been in a state of flux in the courts as far as, is substantial expenditure of, like, your soft costs in getting approvals, is that enough?
Right.
Courts have been-
If I could add on to it, Jennifer, maybe another way of approaching your question is only a court of law can determine ultimately that we have vested rights. I believe strongly that if we ever had to get, argue that point in a court of law, we would win, so, but I think your board's extension is meaningful because it obviates our having to go to a court and get that, a court to say that.
Yep, okay. Again, I'm unaware of any-
That's, okay.
Yeah, and-
I know what you said, and I got it, and it's okay, we're going to move on.
But I think, as I understand, we don't have any objections to this particular extension?
No.
Jennifer, nothing from you, right?
Nothing from you.
Okay, so, not resolving the vesting issue this evening, but notwithstanding that issue, is there a motion to grant the extension?
Sorry, one thing, just a point of clarification, the applicant's letter asks that the extension be measured forward from the date that the board grants the extension, so that would be March 6, but the board has typically kept it as March 2.
Which I think was our original date of original-
Yeah, going back to the original date of the resolution approval. So, I would just recommend that the, in your motion, you clarify that's from March 2 of 2018 going forward.
I agree.
Just as a record, just as consistent record-keeping.
Makes good sense, yep, thank you. So, with that amendment, is there an approval, a motion for approval of the extension?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Stay dry and warm.
Okay, do we want to tackle the minutes? Okay to do, Sabrina, even if Dennis is not here?
Okay to do. Oh, hang on two seconds, let me finish writing down my notes, and then we can move on to that. Okay, ready to go.
Okay, so we have the notes from January 16.
I have no comments.
I had one change on page seven, if nobody had something before that.
I guess really just a question, just to see what the procedure is. On page three, Mr. Barrett referred in line five to a reuse permit. Do we know what that reuse permit was for? How does the county do that? Is it based on the one-bedroom cottage? Is it based on square footage?
I've never heard of a reuse permit.
I never heard of a reuse permit. I mean, usually you go back to that-
That's what he, I remember he said that to us. He said, "Oh, we're all clear with it, reuse," and, and it's, you know, Janice has picked it up that way as reuse, but I don't know what that is.
I mean, generally, the only way the county accepts that is if you have an engineer go out there, look at the septic, test it, make sure that it's working properly, submit the documentation to the county, and they'll say, "We have no problem with that being used as a no objection letter." It's the only ones I'm aware of.
Yeah, I think that he discussed it as a reuse permit, but I think we look at it as a no objection letter.
I would put in no objection, I don't, I-
I don't want to change the minutes, folks, we don't, this is taken as to what Mr. Barrett said, whether or not it's right or wrong, it's his words.
Okay. But it's not really just for us, our understanding.
For us, there is no such thing as a reuse permit. It is a no objection letter, and if you can't get a no objection letter, it means you're doing something to the septic system.
Okay. I had on page five, line 23, I would just, instead of do work, I would just say at the, at the end of that line, under the activities, just the changing of some words there.
What do you want to change?
Oh, let's see.
On line 23, they are required to apply the town for exceptions to the legislation-
Line is related to-
To work on property.
Undertake, undertake activities on the property.
Undertake activities. Is that page five, line 23?
Page five, line 23.
That's saying to undertake activities, okay.
Yeah.
Instead of-
Do work.
Do work on, or we want to leave on, do undertake activities on the property.
Yep.
Page seven now?
Page seven, line 16, as Cressby pointed out, that she believed the parking established for the Kubla building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I thought about checking that today, but given the pile of papers I have on that project, I didn't know where to start.
I'll check it for you, don't worry. I have to check, I have to check the parking anyway.
On page 11, line 56, I don't know if we really want to capitalize the opposition as if it's some entity, and, and I would say at the end of line 55, that by residents and their representatives in opposition.
Residents and-
And their representatives in opposition. And then, page 13, line 5, change it to acting inappropriately.
Hang on a minute.
Was that comment referring to me?
No.
Page 13, line 5.
Acting inappropriately.
All right.
Anyone else anything? If not, with those changes, is there an approval, a motion for approval of the minutes of January 16?
As amended.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the minutes of February 6. I had line 31 on page three. I think it should be in particular, instead of in particularly.
Which line was it?
Line 31.
One word.
Or you could take out "in."
Yes, you could, but I opted not to.
It's wonderful that-
Lawyers get paid by the word, damn it.
Make your own changes.
That's right, crazy face, that's right. In line 49 on that same page, I would say that much of the roadway was impacted with ice.
And much.
Oh, in line 37?
Hang on.
Sorry.
Was impacted. Thirty-seven?
Yeah, board should be, it should not be capitalized.
Okay, I had a change on page four, lines 16 and 17. I would suggest ending that sentence at "there was potential for off-site mitigation in the roadway," period, and delete on the opposite side of the roadway and into the wetland.
I had on page seven, line 12, at the end of that line, switching things to issues. And then I just have a question actually for Jennifer, or maybe Sabrina. In line 47, 48, 49, we talked about the possibility of having the prosecutor move against the contractor, just as a point of information. Has that happened? Is there any, do we know what's going on with that?
I don't believe we have. Sabrina?
No, we have not.
I know in the past, Stephen used to do that.
Yeah, no, that was, there was no direction to do that, I think that was-
It was discussed, but I don't believe he never-
It was discussed as information.
Oh, it's up to the prosecutor, it's not our call, but, I mean, I think we-
Well, it hasn't reached that level yet.
Okay.
So, it doesn't reach the prosecutor unless there's an unwillingness by the property owner to remedy the situation.
Okay.
And so far, there have been remedies.
But I think we had determined that Jennifer had decided that persons in-
What? But charges have been filed, right, against the property owner? My understanding was that they are before the town court.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
And I think we had that discussion, and we decided that the term "person" could also, in the law, could also refer to the contractor.
Like I said, in the past, years ago, when we were doing the, with random farms, where the contractors are out there running wild, Stephen would always give violations to both the owner and the contractor.
Yeah.
They were both appear-
There was some thinking that that might be appropriate in this particular case, given this contractor and some of the behavior.
So, if it is in the courts right now, part of the remedy was to come before you as a planning board?
Right.
So, I don't know what the status is of the court proceeding, other than that they've been following through with what the court has ordered them to do.
Right. Okay, and again, just a point of question is to, I know, Sabrina, I'd sent you the note, and you had indicated that so far, the applicant has not sent in that revised site plan application-
Correct.
-giving us authority to look at this on a coordinated basis, but it's our understanding that it's in the works?
I don't know if it is in the works. I know that they are working on plans as discussed at this board. Staff is, actually, council is reviewing a draft memorandum from your board to the applicant, suggesting that they do just that as far as the site plan.
Right.
I don't know where you are in-
Well, you know, there was discussion at that meeting about the possibility, and I don't think we came to a conclusion, because we needed to take a look at the code, but the possibility that the applicant might submit a site plan application so that the other, the wetland permit and the tree permit would then come within your jurisdiction because you would have the triggering type of application in front of you. But in looking at it further, what that would really do is basically rewrite the code and, and the, you know, and sort of restructure by agreement the authorities and jurisdictions that have been bestowed upon the various boards by the town board. So, I am not comfortable with moving forward in that way by basically having the applicant voluntarily submit a site plan application just for the sole purpose of divesting other boards of their jurisdiction and submitting it to your board where there's no, where there's no delineation under the Site Plan Review Chapter to trigger a site plan to be submitted to your board. So, there's no code trigger for a site plan application, and I just, I would be uncomfortable kind of creating, you know, voluntarily, that jurisdiction with your board, so-
But wouldn't it be fun to try?
You would.
I mean, my, my recollection was that the applicant was willing to do that during our discussion.
I think he said that, that they would look into it and they would discuss it with me further, is what I recall. But in looking at it further, I just, I don't think that it's supportable by the code.
Is it, is it your implication that for us to actually accept such an application that, that we would be doing something that actually is beyond our purview?
Yes, yes.
Right, it would be essentially, illegal's a big term, but it would be something-
Not authorized by the code.
Not authorized by the code, so it would be almost, any conclusions we came to in approving that application would be-
Might be subject to challenge based on that, because you didn't have jurisdiction to do it in the first place.
Yeah, there's no way for us to enforce it, because we shouldn't be doing it to begin with.
Right, so alternatively, I mean, you know, we do have this sort of practical problem where we have essentially three approval authorities for this application. So, you know, I had a conversation with Sabrina about trying to, you know, work within those confines to try to have joint meetings and try to do more of an administrative scheduling to try to bring the boards together, make sure that there's not overlapping of review, so an applicant isn't sort of seesawing back and forth between boards, but try to do more of a coordinated effort between the boards and the approval authorities.
And so, that's a way for us to get our influence into the solution of the problem.
Right.
So, my understanding is that without that, we, wasn't our jurisdiction limited to steep slopes?
Exactly, yeah.
I thought that, unfortunately, we're on camera, but I thought the, the strategy might be that the applicant would look for a way to trigger appropriately a site plan application, with their interest being that it would be better to have a coordinated review by a single board. I think it's wishful thinking to think that we have anything but mass confusion between three boards on this application, just, just coordinating schedules is going to be next to impossible.
Right. Now, if there's a, if there's an actual site plan trigger, that, you know, it's something that's triggered in the code-
And I thought that-
Then that-
I thought that the encouragement was given to the applicant to try to find that, not that to use a pure artifice that still didn't get us within the code.
Sure.
Because we wouldn't want to do that. To Tom's point, I think it's a very good question, very good point.
Yeah.
Could render the whole thing null and voids.
Right.
What's the purpose?
Well, would one possibility be that, that if the applicant is interested in the coordination aspect of what we're proposing, could we go to the town board and ask for special relief and permission to have a site planned because it's in the interest of the applicant and the town?
Just laid of relief for this one?
I can give that some thought.